This is the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for August 24th. Excuse me. Thank you. This is the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for August 24th, 2021. Before we start our agenda, there's one item up front I'll just notice. We don't have the August 10th meeting minutes, so that will be tabled for this meeting and brought to September 7th. But with that, we will enter our agenda. The first item, as usual, is the -- any public input on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Andrew?
Am I on agenda?
You are on the agenda. You're on the agenda. But you can talk when we get to your action items if you want.
This is my first meeting and I've brought the red folder because I have a folder, right?
No, you -- I have the red folder. With all the good stuff. Just everybody knows Andrew's excited about his new business here in Camden that what used to be the Mount Batty Takeout is now going to be Two Dudes Tacos. And I don't want to ask the Two Dudes question, we'll get to that later. Okay. But thank you, Andrew. Thanks for coming. With that, we'll move on to item three, which is -- excuse me. Which is an update on the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant project, specifically the McGunta Cook Watershed Restoration Feasibility Study. Audra, could you just bring us that status and what we have here at the moment?
Yes, so this was a project that was funded with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant to look at the entirety of the McGunta Cook watershed and look at options for better managing the watershed into the future, looking at flood resiliency and also habitat restoration. So it looked comprehensively at the entire watershed, so going all the way from the very end, which is, you know, where it empties into the harbor, which is the mouth of the river at the Montgomery Dam, all the way up through to McGunta Cook Lake and all the different aspects of the river along that corridor. So we have the feasibility study, finally, from the engineering firm that we worked with, Interflue, that's been published on the town's website. It's quite a comprehensive document that gives a lot of clear recommendations to the town on different options for what we can do to better manage different portions of the watershed.
And that was just issued?
So we just received the report on Monday.
Right. Right. And anybody who wants to see it, they can read it on -- where can they find it?
So right on the front page of our website, under news articles, we have a section that's all on river restoration and updates on the project, both looking comprehensively at the watershed as well as the specific work that's being done on the Montgomery Dam.
Thank you. I guess this is considered, for all intents and purposes, their final of that report. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the one we've been waiting for.
For the feasibility study.
Yeah, feasibility. We actually expected it in 1st of August or late July, but it just finished.
It's been slightly delayed, and there is some additional work that they'll be doing on bringing a couple of sites along the river up to 50% design. So the sites they'll be looking at are the, what we call the Knox Mill Dam and the impoundment, as well as the Nolton Street Dam and the impoundment that goes all the way up to the Rossin Avenue Bridge. So we'll have additional information on those two sites within the next month, month and a half, I would say.
By November?
At least by November.
Okay. Are there any other comments on -- this is a new report, it's lengthy, it's 279.
179.
279 pages, a lot of -- well, if you're technical like I am, a lot of great reading, but it's also got a very good executive summary that I did read, and I think it has a good synopsis of what the content is without going into dramatic detail with the studies they've done up and down that river and all the dams. Correct?
Yes, and I would say that, you know, once everyone's had a chance to read the report, or maybe not the entire report, but familiarize themselves with the findings and the recommendations, I think it would be best for the select board to, you know, discuss it at another meeting and--
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, because we can certainly chat out to it tonight, but few have ever read the whole thing yet. I read the preliminary, but not the final. And that would be great, but that needs to come near term. I think we can't wait too long, because you talked about the activities through November, so we would probably want that in September, some time to come back and discuss the report again at the select board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should probably do it sooner than that. We've already had a series of conversations. We compiled lots of questions we got from people.
That's fine.
This is a great -- different people are interested in different dams. That was a lot of the feedback we got when we first started talking about Montgomery Dam, that people wanted to understand the rest of the watershed better. Now we have, you know, a real opportunity to do that. We might as well just start with--
You know, a lot of the impetus for this was, you know, when I started and when some of the members of the select board started, a lot of the dams were sort of at a point where they needed a significant amount of investment just to sort of, you know, repair leaks and issues with the gates and other, just sort of structural issues that couldn't be ignored, or issues with their operation that couldn't be ignored. And that was kind of the impetus, one of the impetuses behind the report. So I think that sort of linking the report to a capital planning process was always the desire of the select board, and now we have more of this information. I think it gives us a good opportunity to go back through and sort of -- we know more about the condition of all of the dams that we're responsible for along the river, and so this gives us a really good opportunity to go through and look at some of the, you know, old structural engineering reports we've received from Kleinschmidt, and then look at some of the recommendations in this and try to time and figure out what we want to do and when and what opportunities that we have available to us.
This is a rather -- it's a big report, it's a lot of information. We might want to consider a special select board meeting.
Yeah, I definitely think it's not something that we would be able to do within the confines of a normal meeting.
It would be -- there's too much meat in the bone.
Yeah, I mean, it takes a while to understand sort of how all the dams work and I think--
And we probably want to have some specialists--
You can talk about it forever and ever and ever and everything, but--
I know, I know. I agree. Well, we may want to have some specialists here, too, like Mike and wherever else, you know, to answer questions more quickly.
Yeah, one of the great things is they did go through a really lengthy review process by, like, agency partners. So, you know, NOAA has reviewed the study and provided comments, US Fish and Wildlife, Department of Marine Resources, all -- a huge part of this is the, you know, the climate aspect of it, too. So there's a lot of really good information in there. We got $150,000 from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to do it.
To fund the study. Yeah, it's quite comprehensive. As you read, it should answer a lot of questions, but it also breeds more questions, so I think that's great. Is there anybody -- Ms. Stephanie, would you please, and your microphone is already on, just please introduce yourself?
I'm Stephanie Smith, and I live on Washington Street, right across from the river. And I think the sooner you get information out to have the public digest it, the better. There's already a lot of conversation, very hot topic, and I've read most of the report, plowed through it, and the executive summary, and actually the page that I found most helpful was 179, the chart, going through all the options, the pros and cons. It's so complicated, however you all can make it simpler so that people understand, because there are a lot of questions, and if you try to explain it, sometimes it gets even muddier. But once you understand the core principles, I just want to say, I think if we can save money, make a natural waterfall, reduce staff time with it, makes all the sense in the world to me. It seems obvious once you read it, but it's not obvious when you're talking to people. So--
Thank you, Stephanie. Thanks for coming, appreciate it. Anybody else who would like to speak to this topic? Mr. Ray?
Brian Grayson. I live on the other side of the harbor, so I get the benefit of hearing the waterfall all the time, and it's one of the, I think, treasures of this town. So I'm a little opposed to getting rid of the Montgomery Dam. Also, I noticed there's a survey going around from College of the Atlantic that talks about removal of three dams, not just the Montgomery Dam. Is that true?
Survey?
So that's not -- there's a student doing a research project on, I think it's public attitudes towards dam removal.
Right. Yep, but it does say removal of three dams.
So that's not affiliated with the town. But I think the report is, you know, there's more than just one dam and different -- the essence of all of this is that not -- the same solution doesn't work for every dam. Different dams in Camden play a different role. And so the report, what we were just talking about, this one here, goes into detail about what the, you know, the way each dam currently works, what the pros and cons of that are, what the options would be. The report basically recommends that for floodplain reduction and a variety of wildlife benefits, that the three dams in the downtown are good candidates to consider removing, and that the three dams in the upper watershed, the ones that control the lake levels and the level of the river where Shertail is and all of that, are not good candidates. It was never even considered to look at those for removal, but that those would be candidates.
Right. But of those three dams--
I don't know 100% what the student from the College of the Atlantic is doing, but she's -- I did look at -- I haven't taken the whole survey, I started looking at it. But that's not affiliated with the town, just to be clear.
It's not affiliated with the town, but it does ask, are you in favor of removal of three dams?
Yeah, it's a research project.
Right. Okay. All right. Because the town does not own the other two dams, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, fine. Does -- Audra, does the -- can I address Audra or the select board?
You can address Audra.
Okay. Do we have a figure of how much the town has spent on the Montgomery Dam in the 30 years that it's owned it?
I don't have that information, or I could just answer that question to you tonight.
Is there something that can be provided to the citizens?
Right, well, when we get to the time, in my opinion, but not our opinion, I want it to happen, when the board gets to the time when we're evaluating options, there'll be a lot of data made available that we don't have at the moment.
Okay.
And by the way, maintenance costs and those kind of things have been estimated, and they'll be provided.
Right. But I mean, you know, I think a lot of people -- because this is eventually going to come to a vote before the citizens of Camden.
If the select board approves, should approve, next year probably, early next year, any actions on the dams such as removal or pressure removal, it will be -- have to go to public vote in, well, as soon as June, but it could -- we never, we're not going to predict right now.
That would be the earliest.
It would have to be a secret ballot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, fine. And also, I think it would be very beneficial to the people in the town of Camden to know what are all of the steps in this process of what is going on. I mean, there's -- the select board has been meeting with the library board about the effects on Harbor Park. This Interflue report, you know, I, when I read that it was on the agenda, I thought there was going to be someone here from Interflue to talk about it, but I think it would be beneficial to everybody to know that that is happening, and I think, I agree, that you talking about a special select board meeting of just that one subject would be very helpful.
Yeah. Thank you, very good to see you.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak to this topic while we're on it?
Hi, I'm Tony Grassi, 363 Belfast Road in Camden. And I have read the executive summary, I did not read all 274 pages, but I think it's an incredibly well-done report. I'd read an earlier draft, and I thought the executive summary was terrific, it really sort of laid out all the issues. I think, you know, in the end, what's going to be important, and I don't know how we get our minds around this, is what kind of funding is going to be available to help. So as you're thinking about laying out a select board meeting and laying out the issues around whether we should proceed with the project or not, I think some further thinking about what's the sequencing, you know, how do we know how much money will be available to help the town in this project, over what period of time might it be executed, one year, two years, 10 years? Those sorts of issues I think need to be laid out, and the -- and there's some pretty -- in the very back in an exhibit, there are the sort of proposed costs for various alternatives, ways of treating each of them, and I think, and there's considerable variability in those depending on which strategy you pick. You know, from, I don't know what the -- I can't remember what the numbers are, but sort of at the low end, two or three million in a given dam, and at the high end, five million, and so understanding the impact on the watershed and the impact on our ability to fund for each of those questions, I think is going to be really important.
I agree.
But I'm, I think it's an exciting project, and I'm, I think the town needs to be looking forward and thinking about issues of flood control. All you have to do is look at Tennessee, for instance, you know? Every time we turn around, there's another, there's another example where there had never used to be any flooding, and all of a sudden, there's all kinds of serious flooding. So I think really taking a close look, and I'm excited to see the town investing in its future, rather than just always dealing with what's right in front of you in the short run, even though I talked about this a long time ago, Val.
We did.
Thank you for undertaking this.
Sure. It's obviously a team effort, and everybody should understand this report, it's large amount of information, and it will take time to digest it and to ask questions about it and get questions answered about it. That could be part of a special select board meeting, but there are a number of steps we have to take yet to really create the effective tools from which to make a wise decision. Not just economic, but that includes that, they're ergonomic, they're, you know, the whole, there's a lot, and we've still got quite a bit of work going on here, and you know, Audra said we're not even going to have some of the information until November. And we'll be, as I said earlier, we'll be circling into the 1st of next year before we, if anything were to go to ballot in June, we would have to have a decision made in the, probably the March timeframe latest, and that, but it's not just a decision, there are also public hearings required for anything that goes on ballot. So there are plenty of opportunities for people to express their questions or concerns or plaudits about what's going on here. This is a big effort, and there's a lot of emotion attached to it, we understand that. But that's our job. We have to be, try to be less emotional, more practical in our decisions, regardless of my individual personal opinion or my engineering background, means nothing in this context. But thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this topic before I zip on to the next item on the agenda? But any, the report is available, we'll be talking about, probably scheduling a special select board meeting, well, logically, in September. We're pretty much getting through August already. But thank you all. With that--
Just really quickly, it would be, I think, really helpful if people who are interested in this would take a little bit of time to read about the program that is funding a lot of this work. So the National Coastal Resilience Fund is a partnership between the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and NOAA. So the idea is projects that both restore habitat and protect communities from coastal flooding using nature-based solutions. And so it's, what they do is they fund projects at multiple stages, so they do these broad assessments with the idea of choosing projects that are highly likely to then receive subsequent funding. So it's a really, it's a really great program. It's also funded partially by insurance companies, so it's funding that's been available in a very bipartisan way throughout multiple administrations, and the idea is to try to put money in, not so much just into cleaning up from these disasters after a big flood comes through, like in Germany, or like we saw in Vermont years ago, but to try to do proactive things to reduce that risk. So it's, and there's never been more funding available for this kind of thing. I don't know if you want to do wait till select board reports or not, but we did say we were going to do an update on our meeting with the library board, if you wanted to just do--
Sure, go ahead. Do it, it's an opportunity to do it now.
So one of the, so we met with the library board, Matt, and a couple of people from the library board, Matt and Audra and I. One of the things we did to start with was just to go over like a basic diagram of the dam. A lot of the time, what I think we've all realized is that we're not all using the same words to describe things, and sometimes that leads to disagreements about things that we don't even, you know, we don't even understand what we're disagreeing on, or if we are or not. So just, you know, this area here is the, you know, impoundment. Here is the dam spillway. The most substantial part of the dam is actually over here, sort of the deepest part of it. This is the sluice way, which is where, when you open the gate, water comes out, and then this here is the connected seawall. This has all been filled in, but along here is sort of the original path of the river. The group that we met with expressed a lot of interest in trying to, you know, recognizing that sea level rise is, you know, an imminent and already here threat to Harbor Park. They seem to broadly agree that there's some things may need to change down here, but wanted to explore saving more of this, if possible. So there are a number of different maintenance kind of issues with this, but what we kind of agreed on is that we would ask the engineers to see if there was a way to still get us to a solution where there's no gate that we would have to be operating, but to use, instead of allowing the river to go sort of back where it would want to go, we would leave this part kind of in, and the part that is not likely to flood due to sea level rise as imminently would be left, and then the bedrock modified here to allow the river to come down sort of in a cascading way this way, and then kind of loop back around here. So there, you know, that might bring up some different issues, but that's kind of one thing that we're going to look at, and we're going to meet on-site. We also talked about, there was sort of broad agreement that the seawall, people like a lot of the things about it now, that granite cut stone is preferable for many of them to, you know, any other kind of soft solution. We looked at some examples of stepped seawalls, kind of like, let's see, this kind of thing a little bit. That's not, that's sandstone and not like granite, but maybe just taking the seawall sort of the way it is now, the part that's toppling over and allowing it to be like, okay, we know there's going to be sea level rise, and that sometimes this is going to be flooded and unavailable, but sort of doing it in a way that's like designed to flood a little bit more that, you know, maybe like over here, that when it's low tide, people can be down here and sitting, you know, when it's high tide, you're up here, that maybe in the areas where, you know, along the American Boathouse and all of that. So they're going to try to draw up something that incorporates this kind of a solution, and then a little bit more of a rerouting of the river to save some more of that. So that's the update.
Great. There'll be more to follow, and this is just one meeting they've had, so that's good. So to your point, right, this is--
You said "they" are, who is "they"?
So Interflue is the, and they're working with Gartley and Dorsky some, but--
Are you working on the design of what this will be?
Yeah, so if you, you may find it, really, if you're interested, we do have a lot of information on the town website with, we had three design input meetings. We have a grant from the Maine Coastal Program specifically for Montgomery. And the idea with that, which I know seemed kind of fast for some people, but we realized that the seawall is falling down faster than we thought, and so we were able to get funding to design what would be a solution to the Montgomery Dam issues and the seawall issues. That doesn't mean that it's, you know, the chosen solution or anything like that, but we have funding to design something that would reduce that risk, and so we're going through that process to see what, if there's a dam removal and seawall or reimagining scenario that would be aesthetically pleasing and agreeable to everybody. So yeah, we had three meetings where we showed designs and got some input from people, and now the next step is that we've been meeting with a group of the library board, since it impacts our--
And those renderings, with those, some of the pictures are in those presentations, and they're on the website. So anyway, with that, we're going to move on to our next item of business, which is we have a couple of action items to go through tonight, the first of which is the approval of a new vitler license for Mr. Andrew Lippman doing business as Two Dudes Tacos. Andrew, would you like to speak to it briefly?
Sure.
I love the name, by the way.
Thank you very much. Hi, guys, it's nice to meet all you. My name's Andrew. I live in Rockland, actually, next door. But yeah, so I was born in Maine, basically lived in New York City for a long time, went to college there, spent a lot of time in Phoenix, and then decided to move back to the most beautiful state, which is Maine. So what we are thinking with this space in Camden Hills State Park, I'm sure that a lot of you have visited it at various times over the years, as there's been different establishments there. We want to offer ice cream, and I have a really extensive background in Mexican cuisine, so I want to do like totally from scratch flour tortillas and salsas, and I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with like carne asada and stuff like that, it's like thin pounded steak, and do vegetarian options, just everything from scratch, no freezers, that kind of thing. Yeah, and also offer the Giffords Ice Cream as well and stuff like that. We've been working really, really hard. I was prepared to do, I was prepared to do anything tonight, sing, dance, I got a pretty good voice.
Well, it would probably not be the first. But no, thank you for coming, Andrew. Those of us who live up in that direction watch the progress, and it was from, most recently, Mount Batty Takeout, as I recall, but with Gary Oliver and company it had. Well, no, that was one in between, you're right, it was one in between. But anyway, and I understand opening perhaps in three or four days?
Well, we were, we were hoping, the kitchen is ready, we've been chipping away at that for a long time. So yeah, yeah.
While we have the exuberance, do I have the board motion to approve this vitler license?
I just, it's just so nice to have somebody be so enthusiastic.
Well, no, and it's so beautiful, but I'm like, there's not something, there's a gap when it comes to like people who live here eating, you know? Like, you guys see like the same restaurants, and I want something that's affordable and--
Cool.
Awesome.
Yes, I'm welcome, Andrew. Would you like to make a motion?
I would move that we approve the vitler license for Two Guys Tacos, Two Dudes, excuse me. Two Dude Tacos.
Story, too.
No, no, that's good to correct.
Do we have a second? This is all crowd tonight, I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All's in favor? 3-0, congratulations, Andrew, go for it.
Thank you so much, guys.
Our second item-- Our second item in action is review, review, renewal of vitler and lodging licenses for Sea Dog Brew Pub and The Jack. Motion?
I would move to approve this.
I thought we were going to be informal tonight, yes. Yes, I will second the motion to approve the vitler license for Sea Dog and The Jack. All's in favor? I think we're moving fast. No-- Allison, you want to vote?
I mean, I am all for--
You did great.
Would you like to?
No, you're--
I'm going to leave the next one to you, definitely.
No, no, you're my hero.
I've been doing this for two years.
Look, we have a big crowd, so we're just going to keep moving. 3-0. The last item in our action is the approval of a revocable-- The last item in our action is the approval of a revocable license agreement for the property at 82 Chestnut Street. Audra, can you give us a brief run summary of that, please?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that Bill can sort of explain this process a lot better than me, but feel free to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. So this is really a way of doing these sorts of licenses and agreements that Bill inherited from his predecessor and it's pretty unique to Camden and local attorneys have been really supportive of this process as well. It's very helpful when we have property owners who want to put infrastructure in the right of way. It's very useful with underground utilities in particular. You know, with above ground infrastructure, like, you know, fences or, or shrubs or, you know, stone walls, that sort of thing, it can be very helpful to have property owners who fully understand that, you know, they're putting something in the right of way when they're, you know, at a point where they want to sell the property, the new property owner has, you know, they're fully aware of it too. And it's, it's, you know, putting this agreement in place with the town for having something in the right of way, knowing full well that at any time the town could ask them to move it if there's a need to for, you know, street maintenance or infrastructure reasons. So, and, and also I, you know, I'd like to thank this property owner. She really, you know, went above and beyond to kind of figure out what her responsibility and obligation was because not everybody who puts fences or shrubs or other plantings in the right of way comes to us and, and asks for permission. So thank you to Ms. Daly for following the process.
Yeah, I would agree. These situations can cause issues when people do put things in the right of way without going through this process. This just makes it so much cleaner, easier and, and quote unquote, the right way to do it. Ms. Daly did it the right way. Bill, do you want to add something to that discussion?
I think Audra covered it. It's, it's a really effective way to not hold somebody up because otherwise if people wanted to have permanent rights, we'd have to go to town meeting for each of these and we have many of them. I don't know how many I've done in the last 17 or 18 years, but it's got to be a couple dozen at least.
Yeah.
And I think Audra covered it. And one of the things about these is that when property does change hands, the new owners have to come in and get the license issued to them as well. So there's a touch point at that time as well.
So.
You should go first.
So again, point of clarification that there's no grandfather in this. So should the property be exchanged or changed hands that they come in and have to reapply?
That's right. If we had something that was akin to grandfathering, it would require a town meeting vote.
Right, right. Allison?
So I just thought this, I was going to show an aerial of the actual property under consideration, but I figured I would not pick on those people on Chestnut Street, but use my own property as an example of so many, because so many people believe, as I did when I first bought my house, that I owned right up to the pavement. And it's just this constant problem. And being sort of a naive recent college graduate, I got right to work putting my grapevines like right, you know, up to the, up to the road. And that's what really pretty much everybody does. And then they're horrified when the town comes along and says they need a sidewalk or whatever. But it's like this is actually, you know, the town owns almost half of my lawn. So it's, it's, most people just do what, what, you know, Luanne is asking for permission for. And so I was reticent at first to give any permission to do it because it's like, oh, we already have enough problems with people putting things in the right of way. But it's nice, like you said, that somebody followed the process and it's a good opportunity to remind everybody else who didn't follow the process, like me, that the town, you know, you should get used to the idea that the town does, that is community property. Sometimes we need it for shared spaces, for sidewalks and things like that. So anyway, the town has a database that kind of shows roughly where you might think the, you know, the right of way might be. It's not always perfectly accurate. Anyway, so I would move that we approve.
It's your turn.
I would move that we approve the revocable license agreement with Luanne Daly, 82 Chestnut Street for a fence in the right of way.
I will second that.
Motion made in the second inning for a discussion. Not hearing any. All's in favor? Three zero. Congratulations, Ms. Daly. Thanks for doing it right. Now we will go on to our discussion items, the first of which is a, well, more of a discussion on the Lake McGuntook management of Barrett's Cove and related issues. Is, there he is. Come on, Paul, if you and Dale would introduce yourselves, I appreciate it.
Good evening, folks. I'm Paul Leaper. I'm the executive director of the McGuntook Watershed Association and.
Hi, Dale Dougherty. I'm the lake patrol warden up at McGuntook Lake.
And the inland harbor master.
And inland harbor master for Camden, Maine.
So we didn't really prepare many remarks. We basically are here to answer any questions you guys have and.
I should highlight for those who are watching that there is a report bound from you all about the status of the, of some of your actions and challenges of the McGuntook Lake, including moorings and the like. And this is more of a discussion. So we do have that in our packet. If anybody's interested knows, they can review the select board packet on our website also. But thanks for that report.
Yep.
But within that regard, perhaps maybe the best way to start off, Paul and Dale, is to summarize what you wrote or your most significant challenges when it comes to Barrett's Cove and particular lake and summarize the mooring situation that you did highlight in your report, if you just could briefly go over that.
I just happened to broom your report.
Okay. I do a lot of it up in my head.
Go for it.
I was worried originally that we were going to lose control of our mooring situation up on the lake and we were just going to get overwhelmed with moorings. Nowadays, or I don't know if the pandemic has slowed it down or people have just gone elsewhere. I don't know what's happened. I have seen very little growth this year. I think I only had two new moorings that I'm aware of. So I'm not that worried about the mooring situation as it speaks. I still get a far amount of, a fair amount of people, the abutters in the Barrett Cove area, the landowners, that still don't like the looks of the boat out there. But then again, they all live on the other side of the road. They got to look across the road to actually see the lake. So, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's kind of a little bit different. The other issues I have is our docks. I guess that's a major one now is our docks are in bad shape. We have a new swim float. Parks and Recs brought that over this year. I think we did a switch with Hosmer Pond and they got our old float and we got a nice new one. But both the docks at Bog Bridge and over at Route 52, they're pretty bad shape. It's about time we replace or rebuild, whichever way you'd want to go. The only other issues I see on the lake is just the use and the crowding at the boat ramps. It's on a good weekend. It is amazing the amount of people that come through there. We're getting a lot of pontoon boats, of course, the families that will bring their pontoon boat to the lake, go out on the lake and anchor and spend the day on their boat. They don't necessarily have to go ashore at that point. And the other thing that has grown tremendously because of the pandemic and just because of the, the cost, I believe, is the amount of paddle boarders, kayakers and canoeers on the lake. There are times when you can look, say towards Bog Bridge in the Land's End area and there was a steady stream of traffic going both directions, going back and forth of all these paddle boarders and paddle boats. Huge, huge, huge people. We get a, we have a tremendous resource in our lake because it's clean, it's pretty and land end is close enough for a paddler to go to easily and safely.
Your report highlights all, I mean, the moorings that were cut along, in that area, a number of them. Was, was this a one-time event?
Yeah, it was a one-time event and only there. They did not touch anything over at Bog Bridge.
So it was only Barrett's Cove?
It was only Barrett's Cove.
Can I clarify that?
In a second, yeah, just a second. Of course you can. One second. Go ahead and continue your report and I'll open to the public for discussion.
Question I have for you is with the increase in paddle boarders, how's the life jacket situation? We've had in years past, there was quite a few paddle boarders that would not take life jackets.
I see.
Which is against the law.
Against the law, yeah. The state has nothing for signage. I went to the state looking for paddle board, you know, need life jacket signage. They had nothing. I built a couple of my own big billboards. You might've seen them, the big green and white things, big five inch block letters, paddle boarders must have life jackets. And that has helped tremendously. I have them at Barrett's Cove. I move them around. I got one up at, in Briesmeere, up at Norton's Pond, and then I take one down to Shirttail Point occasionally so I can take care of the people on the river. And it's getting better, but I see a huge amounts of people renting boards of Maine Sport or wherever and they show up. Oh, where's your life jacket? You need a life jacket, sir. Oh, it's back in the car. You know what I mean? They're not being informed. And I also have that same problem with renters. They let these renters come out from wherever, down country, and they show up here, they get a rental boat, they grab the, the rental, the canoe that came with the rental property and out onto the lake they go. No life jackets, no, no experience, I guess is the way to put it. They don't have a clue and they are dangerous, dangerous people, a lot of them.
Allison.
Yeah, so maybe you could just go through a little bit of like what your normal, like how much time you spend out on the lake, what your general responsibilities are, the, maybe a little bit about the history of the position, you know, how you set priorities. Some, I mean, some of this I know and some I don't. I know we gave, there was an agreement to do additional work last year as part of this inland harbor master solution. And I, you know, understood the issues around trying to, trying to redirect or restrict moorings without actually having a moratorium. But what, but then there's the other part of your job that's just the part that you've been doing.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Because it's just like the basic overview of like what, sort of what you do.
There's a lot there. I deal, we have a license to, what's the word, Paul? Adle, I believe, or deprivation of geese. We handle the geese on the lake.
Oh.
I had a lot of eggs up there. I have a license to destroy those eggs, okay? And I'm trying to keep that goose population under control and I'm losing the battle quickly. That's one thing that goes on and that's what I do.
Yeah, this is a federal program through Fish and Wildlife for resident geese and because there's a couple.
They don't pay taxes.
They don't pay taxes.
Yeah.
But they impact water quality quite a bit.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they're pests on people's shorefront property and that sort of thing. But the biggest thing I see on that is they can create some major water quality issues if they're allowed to. There's, there's very little hunting pressure on McGuntook these days. And so this is really the only way we have to control their population.
There was an early goose season in September and our lake is closed for hunting in that season, okay?
Probably the right choice, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, because of the people on it.
In the legislature's wisdom, many, many years ago, they created a.
Resident geese.
No hunting preserve in, on McGuntook and from, I think it's April through September 30.
Yeah, October 1st, yeah.
The things.
Maybe just like the broad, so is that, how much of your, so number of hours spent on, you know, in your, what's your title of lake patrol, lake ward?
Lake warden or inland harbor master.
Well, inland harbor master part is the new part, right? But the ongoing part that's just driving around, checking to see if people have life jackets on and things like that. So how, how much of your time is?
Oh, I'm out on.
Majority of your time is, is it the goose egg thing or the?
Yeah, during the spring, it's all goose eggs. The next section of me is I do all the navigation buoys on the lake also.
Okay.
The buoys you see out there, those are all put out by me every spring and taken in every fall.
Okay, perfect. So that leads me to my other.
And that is basically, you're getting charged for that these days. You know what I mean? As I break my hours down, if I'm working on navigation buoys in the town of Camden, that part goes under the town of Camden Harbor Master.
So who do you work for? Is it, are you employed by the Watershed Association?
Yeah, I'm employed by the Watershed Association and.
And the Watershed Association has an agreement with the town of Camden to provide.
Which is in the pack.
Exactly. Inland Harbor Master Services.
The inland harbor master services part of it, I understood, but before that, I guess there's, we, the inland harbor master was a new thing.
Mm-hmm.
But there's something that's been going on for, and I don't, I'm just trying to understand. I don't have a position.
That before me, Allison, maybe a little background. Ken Bailey did it and there were several other people. The man before me, Justin Twitchell, they were police officers.
Okay.
They had credentials to arrest people and do all that. I do not. I am out there as a, more of a steward or a courtesy patrol. I don't tell people, you know, I can't find people, I can't arrest people.
Right.
You need a life jacket. He looks at me and says, screw you, and off he goes. You know what I mean? What can I do at that point?
How much speed patrol do you do? I mean, that's, a huge part of my concern is safety out there.
That is so tough. It's 200 feet headway speed only from shore.
Right.
Right.
If you look at McGuntook Lake, there are really very few spots where you can go fast, okay?
Exactly.
So you put a tuber behind a boat. He's exempt from that because he can go to shore to pick up and take his skier off the dock and drop his skier back to the dock.
Sure.
So I have no jurisdiction to these tubers. Once you put a tuber behind the boat, they can go anywhere they want, go as fast as they want, go in circles all day long.
I don't believe that's true. Now, should we maybe have wardens out on the, like IFW wardens out there? I mean, I, I'm just saying, I've had a lot of residents come to me and say, probably as some people know, my sister was killed on Damascot Lake while swimming. And so a lot of people seem to come to me with this kind of a concern and they, just feeling like McGuntook is turning into like the Wild West a little bit.
It really is.
It's, it's very busy on good weekend days. If you go out during Tuesday or Wednesday, it's a, it's a completely different lake.
Different world, yeah.
Having said that, you asked, just mentioned IFW wardens. They will come down on their own accord a few times a year to come out on the lake and do safety stops and that sort of thing. We also basically have them on speed dial. Right. And can call them. So if there's a clear and present danger or something like that, we call the wardens or we call Camden PD and come pick them up.
Well, I guess as, as you're in your inland harbor master, what kind of resistance are you seeing because of the lack of authority and trying to tell people to, well, you slow down, wear life jackets and you made a comment about.
It's not that bad. You know, most people are very receptive to it. Sorry, I don't have my life jacket, I'll go get it type, you know, or geez, I didn't know, you know what I mean?
Because with the life jackets, I mean, I understand. So every time when I go there and I see that big sign that says, you know, the life jackets and I think, yeah, great, thanks for the reminder. But that person that's on a paddle board that didn't wear their life jacket isn't really putting anybody else in danger. And so to me, I think it's worth a.
I disagree with you.
I mean, if somebody has to go rescue them, sure.
Exactly.
But, but the real threat are the people that don't, that have a very high-powered motorized vessel that do not know the rules. And that seems to be increasing. People that have grown up on the lake and understand all that, they, they might, they go slow because they don't want to annoy their neighbors and they, there's kind of this like shared understanding, but, and that's one of my concerns with the moorings too, is that you just, sometimes it's just plopping a boat down and, but though, I would, I would, I think it would be important for sort of there to be a more of a community forum about how we prioritize like enforcement out there and, you know, how can we, how can we like do that and help you to be like as powerful as you need to be or feel empowered to, to, to know like, okay, I know that there's a community concern of X, Y or Z and I'm going to act on that.
Couple of things. The Harbor Masters Association, I went to a training center up at Maine Maritime Academy a year ago, last March, is very interested in some sort of a boater education coming from the dealership perhaps. Something that these people that are buying a boat, you can go out and drop your money down, you can buy a boat that will go 80 miles an hour.
Easily.
With no experience at all and take off and go. There's something wrong with that.
And one of the things the association is doing is within our membership, we're providing, we've had a number of booklets with safeties, do's and don'ts.
Sure.
Stuff like that in these booklets, and we're urging all the people that rent their cottages and stuff like that, put it in your folder. You know, you have a how-do-you-use-the-dishwasher kind of instructions. Right up in front, it ought to be, this is how you're supposed to behave on the lake.
Do you have some signage that, you know, just like we have the...
I do. There are a lot of signs, and they're up at most boat ramps.
But maybe some that are big, like if we provided some funding for that, some educational stuff, just like the, you know, paddleboards and life jackets are big, and that's a big sign. Or some buoys that mark 200 feet from shore.
Well, that is what, it's a little difficult to put those buoys out in the, in the main part of the lake, but right at, for instance, Bog Bridge, you could put, you know, a sign, essentially a buoy, "This is 200 feet from shore. This is your no-wake zone. This is headway speed only."
Right.
Because it's education most of the time with these folks.
Same in the ocean.
Yeah, it's education, yeah. People just don't know.
Right, exactly.
It's not going to stop the crazies, so to speak.
No, but that never happens. But just pause for a second. Paul and Dale, please stay. I know you have a question. I think it's time to bring the questions up or comments anybody wants to make on this discussion. Did you want...
I just wanted to add a point of clarification. It may not be relevant, but...
Would you come to the mic, please? You have to introduce yourself.
Sure, I'm Parker Chamberlain. Becky, I just wanted to add, when the moorings were cut, although it was a one-time event, it happened over the course of weeks.
Yeah.
So it wasn't just...
The boat was out there late, right?
Yeah, so it wasn't just like one day, somebody went and cut them, but it was one day, and then more were cut another day.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, when the boat left, the mooring was cut.
Was that investigated by the police department at all?
Yes, yes.
Randy.
Yes, it's in the report. It's in the report. Sir, please.
It was reported. I'm wondering if it was investigated. That was my question, not whether they reported.
David Lyman from Mountain Street. We have a mooring, a couple of moorings out on Barrett's Cove. I spent a lot of time out there, and it's been very busy this summer. There's been four or five boats trying to get in or trying to get out, milling around as people come down to the dock. The dock is really dangerous, and I've talked to Beth about it, and she says, "Yes, it's on the docket to replace next year." I sent her a packet of proposals with charts and drawings for the new dock, which would be a T dock, not a T dock, but an L dock.
Right.
So it goes out where it is now, but instead of putting anchors, there should be pilings so that the dock can go up and down easily, and with a T, with an L, so that you've got now room for three boats to be able to prepare and load. It also would provide, on the, if you look at the dock on the right side, an area to be made for canoes, kayaks, and paddleboards to be launched, not in the place where the trailers are launching. And that would give them a protected area to come into, load up, and leave from. There needs to be more signing, and I propose that. You've mentioned that, and yes, that's very important. There's not enough indication about the 200-foot line. There should also be some recommendations that I put forward to the committee years ago, and also to Beth, that there should be a notice that it's helpful for swimmers to stay within 50 feet of shore, not swim in the middle of the lake, down the middle of 52, and that kayakers and paddleboarders should stay within the two, on the shore of the 200-foot side. And if they're going to cross the lake, do it at a right angle, so they're not going down the middle of the lake where powerboats are going. It creates too much of a wake for them.
Right.
And it's very dangerous for them to do that. The parking area, I also proposed, that needs to be repainted. There's too many people that are parking illegally on the lakeside of the parking lot at Barrett's Cove, and that needs to be designated with more paint. The handicap is a two-spot place. That should be painted over, and there is one spot down toward the ramp that needs to be designated as a handicap because it's hardly ever used, and that would be an excellent place because when cars are parked, it's difficult for trailers to get in and out. And if that was just the one designated handicap spot, it would open up two more parking places, and it would make it easier for people because there's hardly any handicap to come down there. What I've also mentioned to Beth was, this whole area is one of Camden's great facilities. It's the Barrett Cove Recreation Facility. It's got the beach and the parking. It's got the rowing, the rowing club. It's got two or three hiking trails, parking lots. It's got the launch ramp with its own parking lot, and they've opened up now with more parking for additional cars along 52. And that's fine. There's been a lot of people use that this year. So it's getting a lot more use this year. It will in the future. And I do think that there's certainly amount of education should be handled with either a handout, or, and I put buoys out two, a year ago, was it?
Yeah.
I put them out 200 feet so people could see, this is what 200 feet looks like. And it's hard for anybody to realize, my 200 feet from shore? Well, now you know, because there's a series of buoys that go along. That's the 200-foot line. And that's the most dangerous part, is the speedboats. Not the kayakers and the paddleboarders, but it's the speedboats. And they need to know that they can't go inside that line.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Audra, there is a couple items in the report that suggest, you know, budgeting for repairs for the dock. Is that going to have to be required to be in the 20, the next budget for the next fiscal year?
I mean, it's like any other capital improvement. It gets weighed up against everything else.
Well, I mean, some of the things that, with the floats at Route 52, there's, I mean, there's some stuff that's just dangerous that should probably be fixed right away. I mean, I feel like we could talk about McGonacook Lake right now for the entire, in that there's been kind of a backlog of not having community conversations about it. I get like so many comments from people about Barrett's Cove and the area that's roped off for swimming, and why that is smaller now, and who's responsible for this, and who's responsible for that. It seems like maybe the town, most of the time, the Watershed Association sort of fills a major gap, I think, for us of the philosophy, I believe, has kind of been that we didn't want to take on too much more as a town, like among town staff, and so it was better to kind of have this partnership with the Watershed Association and outsource some of that. But it also seems like maybe with the increased use, it's time to kind of figure out how much, you know, how many resources, you know, do people want us to put into that? And do, you know, do we need more? And what's the opportunity for public input on McGonacook Lake? And I don't really feel comfortable telling people all the time, "Well, I think that's the Watershed Association. I don't really know." It just feels very wishy-washy in that there should be, maybe, I hate to suggest like one, you know, another workshop, but it's, it also seems a little weird that there's like an employee that's working for the Watershed Association rather than the town. Maybe that makes sense, maybe it doesn't, but I...
I think you're right, Allison. I think there's a couple. I was going to, there was three suggested items by Dale for 2021, the moorings, and moving away from Barrett's Cove to Bog Bridge and blah, blah, blah. Those are all issues we need to face for the next season, correct? And I think we have a little bit of time to do exactly what you said. We should probably have a more comprehensive discussion only on this topic about the lake, its direction, its challenges, and some of these items you've recommended, Dale.
I guess I would suggest to the board that if you wanted to delve into these issues more deeply, sometime after September, but before the end of the year, would be a perfect time, because then we're just wrapping up what we have. We have our data and stuff.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah, late fall.
One more thing.
Yes, Dale.
Paul is retiring December 31st.
Oh, really?
Well, we didn't give him permission.
That's kind of a big deal.
We're going to miss him.
That's, do you have somebody else? Are you going to choose your replacement or...
The board is in the process of interviewing candidates, and we actually, I think they've got at least three that are pretty...
Great, I guess.
Wow, Paul, that's...
Well, we'll be talking to you before that, Paul, so we're not going to say goodbye again.
Let's get it done before he leaves.
I know, that makes you think...
Before we close, does anybody else want to speak to this topic? Brian?
Brian Robinson, town resident, also many-year member of the Parks and Rec Committee when there was a Parks and Rec Committee, which I hope will get reconstituted at some point, because I think that's a valuable forum for the input on things like the lake and other parks and so forth. I just want to speak to a couple of things. One is to compliment the town, particularly the police department. Randy, I've talked to him several times a year regarding parking and safety and other issues out at the lake, because I spend a lot of time there. I have a mooring. I also patrol, so to speak, pick up garbage and things, and kind of keep an eye on Land's End as part of what we did through Parks and Rec with Ray and others. And so designating or removing some of the no-parking signs so that there was easier parking, safe parking on Route 52. It's my understanding that there is an ordinance, and I don't think that that's been changed yet, and I would encourage the board to take a look at that. But there is a no-parking ordinance, apparently, or I was told that there was, on the books, that goes all the way from the top of the hill down well past the boat launch. Now, once you get past the boat launch, it becomes unsafe because there's no space there. But there's a lot of space, and it's historically been used for climbers as well as hikers, as well as people using the boat launch, because you can get your car and your trailer beyond the white line and park very safely. So I just encourage the town to take that step to make sure that we're getting compliant with what we really want there.
During our workshop, we can certainly discuss the parking requests. We already did discuss this once, as I recall, and took some actions on those.
A different spot.
Yeah.
He's talking about a different spot.
Yes, okay. Well, we'll certainly take those into account in the discussion in the workshop.
Are there any people up there now?
No, no, not at all. And Randy hasn't ever, for years...
Right.
There's two distinct issues. One was people parking by the ledges.
Right.
Which is far more dangerous, because there's very little space there.
Yes.
And you can't avoid somebody who's crossing the road, because there's the lake and the guardrail and the side of the mountain.
But if you want to take a risk, you should be allowed to.
That's another section. I'm not speaking to that.
Thanks, Brian.
The second thing is, an idea would be that the invasive plant stewards that the Watershed Association funds at the boat launches, perhaps they could be incorporated in the safety stuff, handing out to people who are launching boats to make sure that they're aware of things like the 200-foot limit. And if we were able to come up with a map of the lake showing what that looks like, saying, "These are areas that are safer for you to be doing water skiing and those kinds of activities," it's my understanding from the reading of the law, and Dale, you ain't know better, that you are allowed, if you're picking up someone from a dock, but you're not allowed to be doing that just with a tuber that you put on in the middle of the lake. It's only if you're going to a dock or from a dock that you're allowed to violate that 200-foot radius.
Right.
So I think that was a point.
That's a great idea. I would, yeah.
And the last thing is, I want to, again, commend the town. The Parks and Rec Department got the motorboat that had been the police department's motorboat, so they have a boat dedicated for use to maintain Land's End and other things at the lake. And they added three new picnic tables this year to, because in light of, you know, there's a lot of pressure to, for people to get out kayaking, paddleboards, et cetera, to at some of those nice spots where you can sit and read and have a picnic and so forth out on Land's End.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Good to see you.
Can I ask Brian a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, with the kayak racks, because I get a lot of questions and compliments about that. I know lots of people would just love having that and want more of them. And I know it's too much for the town to deal with right now, but are those, are those full? Are those, like, how is that going?
Yeah. So just to inform people, the, some of you may have seen the, what I think are lovely paddle sport racks that are at Barrett's Cove and over at Bog Bridge. Those have been fully rented. Folks rent an arm to put a kayak or a canoe or a paddleboard or two on, and they're locked up. And it's been very popular. I can't tell you the number of, you know, septuagenarians and octogenarians who say, "Oh, this is the greatest thing. I can't get my, go it up on my car anymore, but, you know, I can slide it onto the rack, and it's great, and I paddle more than I ever did." And we're a very aged community, so I think it's a, you know, it's been a godsend for a lot of people, and I'm glad that we can do it with the permission of the town to operate them there.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you very much. Good to see you.
I just think it's one, like, looking at how we can increase usage and stuff and the amount with our real estate, you can get so many more people out on the lake enjoying paddleboards and like kayaks and all of that with very little impact to other people. But, you know, with just a little bit of real estate taken up for, you know, kayak racks and things, but every, but increasing access for, you know, motorboats for each, you know, person out there enjoying the lake with a motorboat, just the impact to everybody is a lot bigger. And so finding ways to make it easier for those low-impact uses of the lake seems like a good town priority.
Young lady with your hand up, please.
So, I'm Mickey Calhoun. I live in Camden, in town, and we have land out on the lake. And there are two things. One is I drive back and forth on 105 all the time. Bog Bridge has a 45 mile an hour speed limit at that landing, and there are kids fishing off the bridge. There are people trying to back in to launch their boats. There are people crossing the road there. And I don't know what we can do about the fact it's a state road, and maybe they set the speed limit, but it should not be 45 miles an hour there.
They do set a speed limit. They do set a speed limit, and the best that can happen, which has occurred in town here, is to have, request a speed study, but you've got to be careful with that. It can go both ways.
It could go up?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but that, I swear, that is what they say to scare you away from requesting that it be...
Well, have them do it on a weekend, Sunday or Saturday, because it's jammed then.
But I understand. It's a real challenge.
And the other thing is, I mean, this is a dream. It would be great to get at least a shoulder there, if not a bike path, especially with coastal mountains now, having a new preserve out on the Ledwith property where it meets up with 235.
Right.
As it is right now, when I'm driving out there, if somebody isn't brightly lit with really like fluorescent orange clothing, and you're coming around a corner and they're on a bike, A, you may not see them at all, and B, if there's like a curve or a hill, you have to just wait, because you cannot safely go around them until you can see.
Understood.
Anyway, someday it would be nice to have, as I said, at least a shoulder.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Mr. Sergeant?
I think I can answer those last comments that were made. Because way back when, I was the chair of the planning board when that plan was approved and was submitted to us by the state, and we specifically said that there's lots of people going to park their car, walk across the street, get in their boat, and go on their way. And can't we possibly put up some signs that say, "Pedestrians ahead, please slow down," those kinds of things, which I think is what you asked. Because you go around the corner, and unless you live here, you're really not aware that there may be people crossing the street, sometimes with little kids. And the response from the state was basically that until there's a fatality, we're not doing anything.
That's MDOT.
It was a very, it wasn't a very friendly response. So that's been in play for a very long time, and unfortunately, that was, because it is a state-backed road, there's not much we can do locally.
Although when we, when we talked to them recently about Route 52 and some of the same issues there, they, it does seem like MDOT has evolved some, at least in their rhetoric, if not in their, you know, the implementation, so.
Our commissioner's very proactive, actually. Mr. Van Noisy's been very good, and they obviously have a huge challenge with money, with funding projects, especially on all the roads they have to cover. But all good points, and our issue is to have, and 105 and 52 are not the only two. We have it just going on in many places.
We could always just put up signs and just wait until somebody tells us we have to take them down.
Probably could. Probably could. I don't think I'd want to authorize people to do it, but...
If anybody is inspired.
Anyway, I'm going to have to move forward here, and thank you all for your comments. And Paul and Dale, thank you for coming tonight, too. We have a, one item, which is the request from the Charter Commission regarding a non-binding article, which is intended for inclusion on the November ballot.
I've been told it's helpful to bring the microphone closer so that people on cable on 1303 can hear the audio.
That's why I'm up to here.
Not to swallow it, but I think it's harder to hear on cable than it is on YouTube. I'm Deb Dodge. I'm with the Charter Commission, and Lowry Sergeant is here with me to talk about a request for a non-binding, a non-binding article to go on the November warrant. And you have a copy in your packet about what we're suggesting, and what I'll do is, the revisions proposed... And what I'll do is, the revisions, proposed revisions to the town charter is not recommending a change on how we vote annually at the town meeting on the budget. But we realize that as a result of two years of voting by secret ballot on the town budget, there has been some interest in changing the form of voting on appropriations and borrowing at the annual town meeting to a secret ballot on a regular basis. So we thought it was important to try to gauge voters' interest in making that kind of a change. So what we're asking is this to be a non-binding article that says, do you favor having the Select Board or a work group appointed by the Select Board evaluate changing the method of voting on the annual town budget to secret ballot or referendum instead of the current method of voting in person by show of hands at open town meeting? And our explanation is, due to the state of emergency caused by the pandemic, the town citizens have voted on the annual budget appropriations and borrowing by secret ballot for two consecutive years. This non-binding article is to gauge voters' interest in having a town evaluate continuing that method of voting on the budget. Any recommendation for a change made by the Select Board or work group to the charter to vote by referendum would require public hearings and approval by the voters at a future town meeting. We ran this language by Bill. He took a preliminary review and thought it was all right, but he thought it was important to make sure everybody understood that it was non-binding, which means regardless of what the vote is, the Select Board isn't mandated to take action or not take action. It really is what some people will call a straw poll to gauge interest in exploring it. And the reason we are saying explore rather than are you interested in voting by secret ballot versus open at open town meeting is because it really does change the budget approval process. It's not just a matter of do I raise my hand or do I check it off on a ballot? It's a little more complicated, and the impact on how the citizens have input onto the budget, what the responsibilities are of both the Budget Committee and the Select Board. So we thought that having it as evaluate and study it would also be a more open way of taking a look at the subject. Wouldn't be perhaps as threatening to those people that love, that love, you know, the town meeting. We're not saying, do you want to go to a secret ballot, as do you want the town to take a look at it? One of the things we had talked about in earlier meetings was whether we did an online survey. But one of the problems with doing online surveys, it eliminates a certain demographic, those people that can't participate that way. You also, it's very difficult to have control over how many people answer the questionnaire time, time after time. So we thought this was a good way to get to the voters and to hear what they think. Do you want to add?
We know that this is, voting secretly was something we were essentially forced into because of the pandemic. And there's some people that think there may be advantages to that. There's other people that think there's, there's no advantages, and it makes it worse. So we weren't prepared to make a recommendation as to which way to go. And we had talked about Survey Monkey type things, but if we do it this way, we know that people that are voting Camden residents or Camden voters, that's who we really need to satisfy, not people that live elsewhere. Plus, you can only vote once, unlike many online surveys. This is not Chicago, vote early, vote often, you know? So I think that this is just a good way to test the temperature of the water. The results go to the Select Board, and the Select Board can say, these results are interesting enough that we want to pursue it, or we're not going to pursue it. So it's just, it's just to find out what people are thinking.
Right, and the November ballot would be the probably larger population of voters than it was in June, because there was some state referenda that are going to be on the ballot, which will be helpful, frankly, with something like this.
There are other town meeting towns in the state that use secret ballot, the referendum process on a regular basis.
Very few.
But they're, they vary. That's why it's good to evaluate it. For instance, there is one town in southern Maine that puts the budget on the ballot, but they put so much detail that the budget vote itself takes up 11 sides of paper. And maybe, I see that as a disadvantage, as somebody who works the polls on a regular basis, that's difficult, and also drives up the costs of running election. But Kennebunk and Wells have been doing it for a long, long time, and they have fairly smooth processes that are outlined in their charters. Kennebunk has some things that are, that we have seen that are really attractive. Wells, in order to educate the community before secret ballot, they actually mail out to every voter a 48-page financial report. It's not everything else that goes in our town annual report, which is all the committee reports and reports from the department. It's purely the financials. And that's how they sort of solve making sure that the electorate gets educated about the budget before they go vote. So all of those things are worth looking at and really taking a look at the pros and the cons and what kind of a change this would be to what we consider, you know, our town meeting form of government.
Sure.
So you have the language, and we're happy to have our town attorney do any tweaking to it that he thinks would be appropriate.
Okay. Allison, go ahead.
First of all, thank you for all the research into the different ways that towns do it and all, well, all the research in general. I know this is the kind of thing that people don't really want to volunteer their time for, and, you know, you, both of you two are sort of shining examples of the people that are willing to do the reading, do the writing. I like the idea of asking the question, but I think I would prefer to remove one layer from it in terms of knowing, it would be more helpful, I think, to me to know what people prefer, rather than to know whether they favor us looking into it. Because, I mean, and I totally understand your argument that it's, it isn't just simple, but I also think that the number of, or the percentage of people who understand the complexity of that is like 5% at best. And so I guess I would just, I think that what we would do is we would, based on the input, if people say that they prefer voting secretly, then we would look into it. That wouldn't, that would, that would be a, that would be an indication to the Charter Commission and to the Select Board that we should look, look into it. But I think, I don't like the idea of having to speculate on whether people say, well, I never said I was for that. I just favored somebody looking into it. Well, I want to force them a little bit more to think about it, because it's so easy to say, I favor looking into it, but not, I mean, I get, I think everybody's going to say, yes, I favor you.
It's a first step, Allison, and, and I think that when this goes on the ballot, I think it's going to be incumbent upon those of us who are proposing this to put some education out there so people understand that it is not a cut and dried, simple thing, and that it, I think some education will go along with this. I don't want people to think it's just a simple thing to do, to decide to go to secret ballot. That's why we put the evaluate in there. We want people to understand that it takes some work to think about doing it.
I know, I want that, too, but I just have such low, I think people will read that, and it's like, do you favor evaluating, whether to evaluate, whether to, and that it's hard to get people's attention and to help them understand. And so I just want to, and I have to read it a few more times to make sure that, maybe we should try reading it out loud to a few people who we know don't, you know, have a lower level of understanding of how town and government works, which is something I haven't done, just to make sure that they understand it. Like, I maybe would read it to, I just maybe start with my husband.
I think that's, you know, if you all decide that that's how you want to pursue, that is because you're the ones who decide what goes on the warrant or not.
That's correct.
And, and you have, I guess, two sessions between now and when you decide what to put on the, what to put on the warrant.
I mean, we want it to be useful to you, though, based, I mean, you're the Charter Commission, and you have some, you're an independent. We don't control you, so the exercise would be, you know, we want it to feel useful to you guys and to us. Have you, what have you already done in terms of just looking at that language? Have you?
Could you mean the language?
Have you tested it?
This language?
Like, have you tested it on people that have a much lower level of understanding of town government? I'd just be curious, because sometimes it's not apparent to me what they're going to misunderstand.
At one point, we had talked about, should we just say, do you prefer this or that?
Yeah.
Right. I think that that can, can put the Select Board in a really sticky situation. If that vote comes out, 52% to 48%, doesn't matter which side, and, and the Select Board looks at it and says, too close, we're not going to, we're not going to do anything. The 52% will be aggrieved that the majority opinion wasn't followed. Okay? And I think that it could, we're just, we're trying to get some information about how people feel, not, not trying to create the decision.
We just want to avoid them getting to the end and then saying they didn't, or realizing that they didn't understand, which is what happens when we ask them if we wanted to change the number of signatures required to get on the ballot. And I thought that was a pretty simple one, to comply with state law, fewer signatures required to get on the ballot. And they voted that down, and the people that I talked to, a lot of them said they were just nervous, basically. They thought maybe it could be like a voting rights thing. They didn't understand.
I don't, that's, that's a completely separate issue. I mean, I remember a time when we had the definition of dog kennel voted down by the town, supposedly, because there were too, there were too many items on the list, and people just got tired.
Yeah, but I, I think I kind of agree with Allison a little bit here, because I think the word evaluate throws me in a loop. And I think that that's a wordsmithing. Well, I was, well, I was going to suggest that to promulgate or develop the Select Board to develop the needed changes to change the method of voting from A to B. So in other words, it's really telling the Select Board, we really want you to proceed with developing those changes for going with a secret ballot versus just evaluating it.
Or is this supposed to be directed toward the Charter Commission? Or, so what will, will you guys, depending on the results of this, I assume that that would?
It says, do you favor having a Select Board or a work group appointed? It doesn't say, do you favor the Charter Commission doing it? You could.
Correct.
So I guess since this is information for all of you, what's going to be most useful for all of you? Because no matter what happens, no matter what the outcome of this is, either if it's worded as it is now, you're going to have to put together a group to evaluate changing it to a secret ballot, or you could just straight up ask the question, do you favor changing it to a secret ballot? And then you've got the work that flows out of this.
But we're not the Charter Commission. We don't have, I'm really confused about that, because I, the way, everything I've read about Charter Commissions is that once we created, you or the voters created the Charter Commission, you have independent authority, and you can put out to voters, I think, what you want in terms of the charter changes? And so if we're deliberating.
Which we will be doing, but this is not proposing a change to the Charter.
Right.
So that's why we're asking you to put it on the warrant instead of saying, here, this is.
And I think it belongs on the warrant. It's, it's a good approach in general. Some slight wordsmithing is all we need to do and be fine. It just, it's very slight, in my opinion. Maybe it throws me off as the word evaluate. It sounds too loosey-goosey to me, but it means, you really want to, we would like to, I would like to get an indication from the public if they like the secret ballot, you know, they're.
Absolutely. We do, too, but it.
There's a process to get there. I get your point. And, and that process is what they should be approving.
And I, and I am concerned that just putting it, do you want to move to secret ballot would scare people off as opposed to looking at whether it's a good idea to, to look at it, might get more people to say, yeah, let's take a look at it, because I want to learn more about what the impact is about going to secret ballot versus voting in open town view.
Because there are steps that have to go, even after we work on it and look at the secret ballot, which still has to go into the Charter, so.
Right, it has to go through all those steps.
Yeah, I, I think.
But it's, you know, I.
I think we're going to beat the horse a little bit, but I think, I think we, you know, certainly like an indication from the people, whether they, I'm not worried about 52, 48. I think it's going to be quite the opposite. And the people I've heard from, without question, have loved the idea of the secret ballot that we've done the last few years, regardless of the virus. So I think it's going to be more positive, but I get your point.
See, there, there are pros and cons both ways.
I agree.
And as long as everybody understands that this truly is a non-binding article and that it doesn't obligate the Select Board or the town to do anything.
Yeah, I, I think this is, mine, mine's a very, a minor wordsmith, but that's it. Allison.
I've, you know, it's up to you to put it on, on the warrant and how you want to shape it. This is obviously our preference.
Okay. But I think it's, I like a lot of the way you ordered it, first of all. I do think it solves some of the confusion for people with the, you know, saying open town meeting, show of hands. You've obviously made an effort to help people understand. I just want to feel like we understand the process in general of how the Charter Commission is working, because I'm, it seems like I have a misunderstanding of things. What's the current, so we just went through the public hearings for, two public hearings for the Charter changes. And then my understanding was that you guys would listen to that, and then you were kind of on track to put changes out to voters. But is this non-binding?
Has nothing to do with it.
So you're not going to alter your, do you have a schedule now for when you think?
Yes, we're actually going to, your meeting on the 21st is when we're going to bring you the language for approving the revisions to the Charter.
Right.
We have a meeting tomorrow night to, the Charter Commission has a meeting tomorrow night to discuss the input that we've had over the last two meetings to finalize some outstanding items. We'll have another meeting in the middle of September to write our final report. And when we hand you the final report, we will be asking you then to put it, well, we will be handing you the final report, and when you get the final report, you then put it on the warrant.
Correct.
So, and the language that goes on the warrant is one or two sentences long, and it's prescribed by statute.
Right.
So I just guess I, why wouldn't we slow down that process and use the input that is gained from asking voters what they want as part of the Charter Commission process?
Here's the rationale. This is, would be a very substantial change to how the voters vote on their town budget. It is, probably would be a more substantial change than anything else that's being proposed in the Charter. What we will be delivering is a charter that is now updated after it hasn't been updated for 40 years. We are going to be delivering a product that has modernized the current town charter, yes, with some changes, but this is an issue that I think if it were with all of the other revisions, this could be a win or lose question for the town charter.
But it's exactly the type of thing that a Charter Commission is supposed to look at.
I think that we know that regulations handed down from the state are always in flux. They're always changing. We had talked about, what's called, remote meetings and whether and how that should be addressed. Well, those things are still in flux. If, if what we do is always wait until we have every question answered, we're going to be back here for the next 30 years trying to get this thing approved. It's going to be a very long time, because in the, in the year that it would take, perhaps, likely, to find out the answer to these budget questions, lots of other things could pop up from the state, other conditions that we need to address.
Yep.
I just, when I read the, the reasons to form a Charter Commission and the Maine Municipal Officers Manual of things that the Select Board can put out to voters to change here and there, you know, length of term of planning board members, things like that are all things that can go out to voters as individual warrant items. But then for major changes to the form of town government, that's when we would have a Charter Commission.
No, not necessarily.
It's, well, it's all discretionary. I mean, it's a little bit subject.
We're not changing the form of town government.
I know you're not, but I'm just, I'm just confused about why you think this is such too big of a change. I mean, I guess clearly it's too big of a change to be considered by this Charter Commission.
And it doesn't have to be a Charter Commission.
Future Charter Commission.
A Select Board can propose, which are amendments and revisions to a Charter. You do not have to have a Charter Commission. The amendments that have happened in 2013 and 2016 did not take a Charter Commission.
That's true, but generally speaking, the best practice, it lays it out, what, you know, we were to change to a city council form of government.
Or a hybrid.
That'd be tricky to make the argument that we didn't need a Charter Commission at all to do that. That'd be challenging. It's not that challenging to make the argument that we, you know, to change all the things that you guys changed, we could have probably done that without a Charter Commission. It just seems like you guys are the right group to, why wouldn't we be?
Thank you, I think that expresses confidence in what we could do, but I think we want to move this process along.
You're, you're, yeah, okay, I get, you're like.
No, I, I think it's important to move this process along. We've been working since the end of 2019. We've made significant progress in updating the town charter that we have, and holding that up for this item, which I think is substantial, I think, in my mind, is a mistake.
Yeah, without sounding too much like a national politician, we don't want to give up the good in pursuit of the perfect. You know, and at some point, you need to say, based on everything we've learned, which has been substantial, these are all the recommendations we make. It could be in two years, the state has new statutes, there's other environmental or disease things we need to respond to. And at that point, we could sit back and say, wow, based on this new information, we need to do other things. That, this is a living document.
Yep.
It will always be a living document. Hopefully, one of the things we've done is make sure you don't wait 40 years before you give it the paddles and wake it up again to make, to make changes. So at some point, you got to say, this is it, this, this is, this is when we're going in.
The other thing is, the last, we just voted a secret ballot for the second time just this past June. It's very recent, you know, in memory, and I think the time between June and November is a short period of time. And you're suggesting, do we do it next year?
I mean, yeah, a lot of, the majority of Camden voted on the budget for the first time ever. And so to me, given all the changes right now, that if the idea of going a, a year or two more, telling people, nope, sorry, no way to vote absentee on the town budget, I have been screamed at by people. They feel that I'm responsible for, like, taking that right away from them. It's like, to not, people are, have grown accustomed to being able to vote absentee. And so to me, to put out this whole Charter change thing and, and not give people, to force us to tell everybody they have to go to that opera house with the town, you know, with a show of hands.
Our current town charter is the one that determines that.
I know.
The one we have right now.
Deb, a lot of people don't, they're, they have such a little understanding of how town government works, that they think voting on it by secret ballot now, because they've never gone to open town meeting, is the way that it's supposed to be done. That's sort of what, that's the perception that's been created, I guess.
That's why we know there's interest in it, which is why we want this, this non-binding.
No, and I totally understand what you're doing, but I think.
But I'm trying to tell her, the responsibility is not yours to make that decision about whether you're taking away their right to vote on the budget by absentee ballot. That's what our current Charter says.
I know, and I explain that to people, but I'm letting, I'm just, I'm, all I'm doing is trying to influence you guys. You guys hold the power right now as the Charter Commission, and I want to influence your opinion. You know, I, I want, I wish you would move that forward now, rather than, but it's, you know, we disagree, we don't disagree that much, but we just disagree on the speed of it.
True.
So.
So it's, it's in your hands.
Yes, thank you, and I said, thank you.
Did you want to?
I'll try. So I think, I characterize it this way, the Charter Commission has reached, or about to reach their conclusion of what to suggest. That's what they do. They have public hearings, and in that forum, these discussions are held.
I know, I was there.
Forum, they use that information to reach their conclusions. It happens that this is coming from the Charter Commission, but this could have come from anybody. It's really an extra step to start a process by the Charter Commission saying, we've reached our conclusion about this, but the townspeople may have a different conclusion, but there needs to be a process for them to consider that thoroughly.
I know, I'm just disappointed, because I was at the, I was at the public hearings, and then I was hopeful, when I saw this, that they had been swayed enough by input that they had gotten, that they had chosen to evaluate that, but now, so it's now being hammered home that that's not the case, that they're going to move forward with the language from before.
Actually, the last meeting we had, it was split, but.
What do you mean?
People that came, once people spoke for.
You can't look into the, I'm not, it's not people who come to meetings that make a difference. It's not, that's not a representative sample. So ultimately, you just have to.
You mentioned that you, you were concerned that we didn't take into consideration what we had heard.
No, of course you did, I don't think that at all. I think you guys.
That's what it sounded like.
No, no, I just wanted certain arguments to compel you more than others. I mean, it's, it's simple. I mean, I just wanted you to be compelled by my way of looking at things, and it's, it's fine, that's.
Yep.
I'm just processing, oh, I got excited when I saw this, because I thought, oh, we're going to evaluate that as part of this Charter Commission, but I'm now going through the stages of grief of realizing that that's not the case.
Yes, yes, yes.
Then I have to decide whether to tell people, oh, should you vote, should you vote in favor of the new Charter that they're recommending, and.
Well, it's, it's not an all or nothing, Allison, because there's the opportunity to change the Charter.
When?
Next year, anytime.
That seems to me a little dislike, it would be disingenuous of us to go through this whole Charter Commission process and change a bunch of little language, and then propose, would that be okay, Bill, to then the next year, for us to go back to voters with a big change like that?
We, we need to truncate this discussion, because it's clear to me that we're going to be seeing a Charter change coming to us, which will go in the ballot in November, and we have to make a decision on whether or not this goes and how it's worded.
Well, can we just, can I just, because that would help me to understand, could we then, next, after voters vote on this Charter, then the next year, if the Select Board wants to put out?
A change.
A Charter change that would be secret ballot voting? Would you endorse that as just a single?
I think Lowry's point is, is the core of this, which is the Charter is a, a live document that gets amended when amendments are put forth to the voters. This is a big deal, this is a revision, this is the big review. And the statute is so bigger and bonyer and more complex with that, they've gone through that process. But there's absolutely nothing that stops, or should stop, amendments with the voter approval, which are smaller pieces of the Charter, at any time.
Is there anything that absolutely can, is there any change to the Charter that would definitely have to go to a Charter Commission? And not as a change put out just by the Select Board?
Sure, if, if it helps, MMA has some.
I've read it all.
Okay, so that would be where I would say the answer is.
Changing the form of government, but it seems to me that what, Deb is suggesting that this, that, that the changing the way we vote on the budget, it almost is a for, change to the form of government, or no, you don't see it that way.
It's a, it's a big change to the budget approval process, and it's a big change to how the citizens vote on the budget. And it's a substantial change to us.
Okay, but you would think it would be okay just to put that, based on what we, input we get, if we put that question out to voters, I would be.
Bill is the one that gets to decide whether or not it's okay for you guys to put that on, on, on the next warrant, whatever the next warrant might be. It's not our choice, it's his choice, he's the town attorney. Now, it's his job to provide us with the best advice possible.
Well, it also, it says in the MMA handbook that ultimately, it's a political decision, in some ways.
That's why, that's why the town voters.
It's all political.
It matters to me what you think, too. So I would think, to me, it would be for the Select Board to individually put changes out to the Charter after you guys have gone through this really thorough process. To me, that, I would have imagined that, that you would think that was a little bit underhanded or something. No?
Since we are proposing this non-binding article to explore whether it's a good idea or not, we're not going to be incensed.
Okay, it just wasn't clear to me that that was part of a new thing, rather than, it didn't say anywhere here that this was totally, all your other work was going to be totally concluded before considering this. I'm just press, I'm just trying to follow along. I'm not, I, I think you guys have done an awesome job. I, I like to understand things thoroughly before.
Sure, sure, okay. Thank you, yes.
Oh, all right, good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Ciao. Thank you very much.
Let us know what you decide.
You'll definitely know.
Because when we approved the Charter Commission, we didn't do this, and then a lot of us were surprised at the process.
Okay, the next thing we have on our discussion name is the proposed pending Penn Bay Chamber of Commerce fireworks for September 4th, is that a great date?
Yes.
September 4th is a Saturday?
Yes.
It's that Labor Day weekend, I guess, huh?
It is.
Okay, so the status of that, Adra?
Honestly, I really, I'm not the person to ask. This is not being done by the town, this is being done by the Chamber, the Camden area business group.
Let me ask a question this way, we do have a policy that we developed in 2019, or whatever we did. And are there still outstanding questions with the Chamber that we have to have answered in that regard? We, we put that in place for the purpose of not having happened what happened in the past, which was an unknown to us fireworks display in our harbor.
Yeah, so I mean, as far as I know, the, the fire chief has told me that they don't have their permit from the Fire Marshal's office yet.
Okay.
I, I know they've been speaking with Steve Pixley about the location of the barge. I don't know exactly where that is, because I've received different information from Steve Pixley about where the barge is located, from the information in Tom's email. Randy kind of sent, sent me a message saying that he needs to know right away whether or not this is happening, because he's concerned about having staff available for the event, because he's very short-staffed right now. He's two officers down, and he's got one on that's, that's on paternity leave. He's got others that are going to be, I believe they're going to the academy pretty soon. So, yeah, it's, I mean, I, everybody is informed, but I feel like there's a lot of unanswered questions. That was sort of the idea of having it on the agenda for tonight. Unfortunately, you know, nobody from the Chamber organizing the event was able to be here tonight. So I feel pretty unprepared to answer any questions.
Okay, that's fine, tonight, but when do you, when do you, can I, idea when you could issue us a report on the policy? As to what's going on?
I, I mean, no, because this is not our event, this is an external.
I understand that, but there are, there are, still, you said Steve Pixley's involved in trying to pick the location of the barge, and the things we put into that policy. And, and the fire department notification, the police department notification, those are all occurred. But I agree, we can't reject it, but we can still influence as we go forward.
I mean, I would say at this point in time, I, I have some questions that I, I was hoping that would be asked and answered tonight, and I don't think we're going to get any answers tonight.
Well, why don't we get those questions sent to the Chair Chamber and copy us, so we can see the answers?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
I think you already have, haven't you?
Well, I mean, I, like I said, the location of the barge, I would still like to know exactly where that is, and that we have a plan in place for it. I would, I mean, we, they need a permit, or they can't have the event at all.
Well, if the permit doesn't come, it's all dead.
Yeah, and I, I just, I, I feel a little uncomfortable, because I still feel like this is a scramble, and we all, we knew it was going to be, because the Fire Marshal's office, the timeframe that, that we've heard about in terms of getting permits.
Right, right.
And I'm concerned that we're having an event that's going to be shoulder to shoulder, packed with people in the downtown, like fireworks always are, because they're incredibly popular.
Right.
And that I just am not going to have the capacity within the Police Department to sort of manage crowds like that. So, I mean, those are, those are all my concerns, and I was hoping that would be stuff that we could talk about.
Like I said, those, we're not going to answer tonight, so, you know, we can bang our heads against the wall, go forward with an action plan, which basically is to ask these questions. Well, Randy's going to have to come across with what he can do. We, you have to plan this is happening, you can't guess it's not going to happen. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't. Fire Department, and I'm sure, I know Chris is engaged, Steve Pixley's engaged with location of the barge, and blah, blah. I don't, I don't think anybody else we can do. Allison.
I, so I see a, a big role for us here. Whether or not we have the authority to permit or not permit a fireworks display is very different from whether we have the authority, or Adra has the authority, to allow or not allow, or encourage or not encourage, major staff mobilization to make it happen. And so I think we're sending mixed messages. And I would, if I were the Chamber, or whoever's doing this, that would be frustrating if, you know, you have a town, like, you know, town staff people are speaking on behalf of the town and saying, you know, here's where you could do it or not do it. We, this requires relocation of moorings. So the Fire Marshal, in approving this, I would imagine they take that into consideration. And if the town is not willing, you know, that is a policy decision, whether or not to mobilize, to tell mooring owners that they have to relocate because of a fireworks display. And so what we have in our packet is something I think is not going to work at all. That we should be able to categorically say right now that doing this, and I think this was originally chosen because they were going to do an even bigger barge.
Right.
And so they, it would have required way too many mooring relocations over near Curtis Island, where it's normally done. So it was thought that maybe Sherman's Cove would be good. I think we don't know what the unintended consequences of that might be, and even just the fallout zone being like, very clear. But to me, that looks problematic, so.
The last thing I got from the Harbor Master was Dillingham Point.
Right, and what we got from Tom Pico this afternoon.
What they did, what they did to him before.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand, there's less, there's less mooring relocations in that area. Not, it's not a mooring relocation, it's a boat relocation, just to be clear. You're not moving a, you know, five-ton piece of concrete block from the bottom of the ocean. You're just moving the boat, because I have had.
There needs to be a process in place to make sure that people can do that. We need to have, a couple of years ago, Curtis Island did have a small fire. So we have to be prepared with people out there. It's, and then there's the, the COVID part of all this, so we've canceled wind jammer weekend because of COVID.
Well, it was also a. There were no state regulations to prohibit this fireworks display. No, but I'm saying there was when, when we had the wind jammer weekend, not the wind jammer weekend, it was the other one. Wind jammer was in September.
Yeah, that's the one that was canceled.
Okay, well, you know, I, you, Roger, all we can do here is get the list of concerns in front of the Chamber and try to get answers, including the location, by the way, and, and see how it fits with the town, because that's, that's part of our policy.
Yeah, but, so, do we have another meeting before?
Nope.
So we're putting Adra in a difficult position here, of trying to decide whether to tell town staff to mobilize and respond and organize and make this happen? Or if we say, you know what, we don't, we've got a lot of other stuff going on, and we don't have the resources, because we have other priorities, which were identified at our Select Board workshop, and.
I, I'm sorry, I strongly believe people in this town want the fireworks, they missed them, we didn't have them on July 4th, and other towns around us all did. There's no reason why we can't do it, unless, Roger, you're going to tell us, your staff is just non-existent. I mean, I'm not hearing.
I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying I would like clear direction from the three of you that, yeah, that that's, that we're, we're going to do whatever we can to make this happen.
I think we should, whatever, do whatever we can reasonably to make this happen. If there's something that's not reasonable in your judgment, then you have to, you can make that call.
Yeah, but that is really an unfair position to put her in, because it comes down to your philosophy about COVID, and should we be following state recommendations for Knox County? Or should we only be following the, if, if it's a mandate? Are we trying to get through with encouraging?
Are there any state mandates that prohibit this gathering for this fireworks? Is it what that happened in other towns on July 4th?
No.
Okay, that's clear.
That's different, Bob, though.
No, it's, I'm, there are fireworks displays that occurred in every town around us except Camden on July 4th. And many people came to me and said, we're disappointed Camden didn't do it. They tried to plan too late, as you know, and, and it may happen here, too. But so, you know, we can throw all this fodder at it, not as, the Fire Marshal provides the permit. I believe we're predisposed to make it work from a, from a town perspective, as safe as we can, with police, fire, too, I suppose, or, or make them, as we did with other fireworks performers. They had to bring their own resources onto Curtis Island to check that night for fires, and, and the next morning for cleanup, if you recall. So we had all, we've had all these restrictions before. I know the timing is tight, it's only two weeks, I get that. And by the way, we don't know if they're going to get that permit or not, anyway, but I don't know what's going on in Augusta. It could be really slow.
So back up a couple of steps, when you're saying, don't, won't get that permit or anything. So walk me back a couple of steps here, in terms of where Tom Pico is at, and is there, again, I'm the newbie here.
Yep.
And what is the procedure that Tom has either followed correctly or has not followed correctly, in terms of? Again, we'll keep COVID over here, if that's okay, for one moment.
Yep, yep.
Now, let's just isolate the, the fireworks. And has Tom followed, and if you could tell me what the procedure is, and if he's followed a procedure that has been, again, according to this 2019 document that I haven't seen, so I'd love to know.
The policy is, first of all, is a procedure for, for regulations that the town imposed, because there was a fireworks display that was done without our knowledge. And because the law in the state of Maine is, a public fireworks display must be approved and a permit provided by the state Fire Marshal. That entity that did it and got approval from the state and did the fireworks display legally.
So hold there for one. So hold there for one moment. So has Tom gone through, again, just to bring me up to speed, I read through these documents, there's lots of gaps and holes, so has Tom gone through the state and been approved by the state?
He's applied for the permit, but they haven't received, it hasn't been issued.
Right.
And what's the normal time, I mean, this seems so rushed, for God's sake. I mean, wouldn't he, wouldn't he have a permit?
He said he, we had, we got an email from him, so it says, maybe we should just read that for the record because he would have said that.
Sure, go ahead.
So, "Good evening, select board members. My apologies for not being with you tonight. It was my plan to join you this evening, but I had a late conflict, so I'm hoping this update will provide you with the information you need. As you may know, a collaboration between a number of local contributing businesses along with the Camden Area Business Group and the Penobscot Bay Regional Chamber of Commerce are planning a fireworks display over Camden Harbor on Saturday, September 4th. Rain date, Sunday, September 5th. This effort started last spring when our group," and I know you know this, but I just feel like we should read it.
No, no, it's good, it's good. No, it's okay for the record, absolutely.
"This effort started last spring when our group had hoped to have a fireworks display for Camden on July 4th, but as you know, the rapidly changing COVID landscape made it such that we were unable to bring all the pieces together to make that happen. Having collected over $7,000 already toward a show, the group continued to look for dates and opportunities to make a show happen in 2021, and we decided that Labor Day weekend would be a great time to do this. We can still have fireworks on the 4th even though it is the 4th of September. On August 2nd, I reached out via email to the town manager, fire chief, police chief, and harbor master, who was already aware and helpful with our hopes for a show, in a group email to notify them of this plan and to seek their guidance on what needed to happen from the town's perspective to make this happen. Both the town manager and the fire chief got back to me with a copy of the town's commercial fireworks display policy documented in a memo from August 2019. Is there any chance somebody could email that to us right now just to?
Yeah.
"I have had two conversations with Chief Farley, and I believe that he is satisfied with that our collective efforts are complying with this policy. The fire, this fireworks show will be shot from a different location than several in recent years at the recommendation of the Harbor Master. The attached image provided by our vendor, Central Maine Pyrotechnics, shows the location of the mooring off Sherman's Point that will be used for this show. Our publicity around the show will inform the public of this location, so those wishing to view the show can choose their favorite spot for viewing. The Camden Area Business Group, the Chamber of Commerce, and local businesses are pleased to be able to make this happen for our residents and guests this year. I am happy to answer any questions you may have and appreciate your support."
Okay.
Now, that was an email that was sent to us tonight, you have in your.
Yep, yep, no, I saw that. So I'm just going to walk us back again to, Bob, to your point. So it requires, it requires state authorization at this point?
They had to have a permission from the state.
Or, or this is a no-go?
Exactly.
Okay. And what's the normal turnaround, just from your experience?
Well, normally, it takes a long time, but, no, I'm sorry, normally it's very short. But, you know, I have to be a little jaundiced because I think it's due to probably the virus and things that Augusta's a little slower than normal, but they eventually have gotten to these things. And I'm not aware of one of these permits that's ever been refused by the state.
Okay, so assuming the.
We don't know, we just think.
Yeah, so the difficulty, I'd say, again, back to Audra, and this, this idea that there's the time, that the permit isn't approved and then it's whether, with a very short window, can the town then facilitate this event?
I mean, we can, if, if we're, I guess, operating from the presumption tonight that they're going to get their permit.
Well, I don't give a choice.
Yeah, and then we just go about our preparations and if we find out that it's not going to happen, then.
Okay.
So is the permit then, according to everything from the, from?
Tom.
Tom and this, and seemingly Tom's the one that filled out the permit application, it all says this Sherman's Point location. And so, but then, so I'm confused.
Yeah, she made a comment that that's not true.
I meant Steve, and Steve said that that was initially the case because it was going to be a much larger barge, but now that wasn't going to be possible, and so we should go back to our original location. But doesn't the Fire Marshal approve the location?
Right, the permit, the state permit, wouldn't that happen?
I don't know.
No, I don't believe it does. I don't believe it does. It's just that you're allowed to have a fireworks display in Camden Harbor. That's probably the way it's worded. That's where every other state does it. I'm not an expert, I'm not, you know, not the Fire Marshal, state Fire Marshal.
Yeah, I can't answer that question.
They don't, they don't get into, they, people are smart enough to watch out for fires and blah, blah, blah. And, and there are a lot of regulations on how you can set off those fireworks, because you have a lot of explosives in that barge.
Yeah, and we've actually had fires on Curtis Island, and we get complaints about the, about the stuff that falls in the water.
But that's Matt's question. I don't believe it's going to be specific. So there is some question about the location of the barge, and I was a little surprised, like Allison too, to see what they were thinking about putting it over there. That doesn't make sense to me either. But I think where we've had it historically, yeah, we got to, we've become much more diligent, in my opinion. That's why Chris, his cord, Chris Farley in here, is saying he's, likes their plan. He's the one I rely on for fire protection, not me. And I, I think Audra knows that, and, I mean, it sounds like it was an issue with the fire, I'm sorry, the police department, but I'm not sure what kind of, you know, what that really is, Audra. I understand that shorthanded.
Yeah, and I mean, and they just, okay, sorry, Chris Farley's watching, and he said, yeah, that the state Fire Marshal's office approves the location.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
The actual location. So I.
They, they would, or they have?
They do, as, as part of the permit.
Okay.
So.
You're going to know.
I would like to know from, not just what, not that I don't trust Tom Pico or anything like that, but it's helpful to me to hear from Chris Farley and from, you know, straight from the horse's mouth, this is why I think there isn't a risk. I mean, clearly we see this through different eyes slightly. We all do this thing where we say, well, really, we should agree on the priorities and town staff time, but then each of us do this thing where we say, but this is super important, and so of course the community wants us to respond, and sometimes we feel differently about that. And I know Camden residents have strong feelings about fireworks on both sides, and, you know, I fall more on the, hmm, probably shouldn't eat up all the town resources, and maybe I don't want this to be a super-spreader event.
Right, let's get to that second. So if it's okay, can I cut in, just back to, back to Gani and Farley? I mean, so is your take, and apparently we could text them, that whether it's Sherman's, wherever they put the barge, that both our fire and public services and police would be amenable to this particular event?
I mean, they'll, they'll make it work.
They'll make it work.
Trust me, they'll make it work.
Again, I just want something for public rights, just one, as we're moving forward.
The state Fire Marshal's not going to come to Camden Harbor and check out two different locations. They're going to have to submit one location to him, and, him or her, I'm not sure, and get that permit approved, and that typically is not a big deal.
Okay. So I see you nodding, probably maybe just kind of saying, okay, based on that.
Well, I mean, there's, I, I feel like we're like truly kind of in a position where we're going to react.
Right, right, we are, we are.
You know, like, they don't have a permit yet, so.
Right.
We just.
And I would spin it as a positive and say that, you know.
We have, I mean, Chris, you're listening, can you contact the state Fire Marshal and get the status of the permit?
Yeah.
He did today, and they said that they have it, they just haven't, they haven't issued it yet.
But see, it's, it's unfortunately.
They're gonna, they will issue it.
I know they will issue it. I guarantee you they will issue it. They've issued every town around us in this last, in July 4th, so they will issue it. So I don't think we should sit and say they're not going to issue it. Now, the issue is about where the barge should be, I get that part, and safety, fire, I get that part too, but that's, that's.
July 4th was a different COVID situation.
Well, well, but it is.
I agree, a different issue.
Let's go, you'll go to that next.
The people that watched in Lincolnville and, and other towns were out on July 4th and, you know, but what is different and not, there was still cautions with gatherings. If people don't feel comfortable, they don't need to go.
So back to the idea of being proactive, permit is approved.
Yep.
And fire is on board. Hello, Mr. Farley out there in, in the public. Public services approved, they can put in the overtime. And can we go to the right hand, this idea of a super-spreader event? And now we start to get into some other issues about where we stand on that, and. Hi, Bill.
Well, I mean.
I mean, I, I just came up from, you know, came down from Mount Desert Island where, you know, basically the island just got nailed. I mean, so, you know, it was just, it just came out of nowhere, and suddenly the hospital's overwhelmed and it's a mess.
Yeah.
So it's something that we should, again, okay, there's left hand, fine, and now a conversation about the right hand, about this other thing that's looming in Maine these days.
But our, our job as elected officials is to follow their, we swore to follow the regulations of Augusta. At this point in time, there are no regulations in this regard. I understand the gray zone, you're, by the way, I kind of agree with you, but however, we have no basis other than opinion at this point because we're not being directed other than, you know, the, you know, the, a few things we're getting. Now, that may change, by the way.
And that's why I bring it up.
And if that does, it gets canceled.
Okay.
Are there guidelines about size of gatherings?
Nope.
No, so the only, the only thing that we're sort of getting from Maine CDC right now is that if your county is elevated to a, like a.
Eighty out of so many.
Severe or significant, I forget the words they use, but like, basically if you're orange or red on their map at any given week, then they recommend that you move to indoor masking.
Right.
We're, we're moderate transmission right now in Knox County.
At the moment.
At the moment, that was different a week ago. We were.
It was.
I, I forget, I don't know if we were severe or, I don't know if we were red or orange.
We were red last week.
We were red last week, we're.
This week we're not.
We're yellow this week.
I didn't see it.
The only, the only formal guidance is about masking and indoor settings.
That's correct.
There's nothing about like crowds, there's nothing about outdoor masking, so I don't, I mean, but that, that being said, you as the select board can provide other policy guidance.
In terms of use of town resources, on, I don't love the idea, do you, it just, you do go downtown during the fireworks and like see what's, like, have you ever tried to get into the Camden Deli or anything like that during?
No, 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 no.
It's, or just up the harbor walkway, it's, or pushing through, it's, there's so many people, just to get back to your car, you have to, and there are people trying to drive up the wrong way, and the police department's having to talk to 50 million people to say, oh, no, go this way, go that way. I don't know, I just feel like putting them face to face with a lot of people.
Yeah, that's true, but you're going to have to face, and, and even in Knox County, the other, the other places that are going to have fireworks, and the same thing's going to happen. It's the same county, because Camden decides it's going to create some regulations, I guess we call it, because we think it's a smart thing to do. I, I firmly believe you'd just be disappointing the public. We did it, we did it in July, and I heard nothing but people saying, why were you the only town that didn't have fireworks?
I heard a mix of things, but some people saying, huh, what a relief. Finally the dogs are happy and the, you know, the bald eagles didn't get scared away and the.
But from the legal perspective, if they get this permit, I assume they will, and they, they're going to have the fireworks display.
Mm-hmm. Maybe we just don't have extra police presence.
Maybe not, maybe not.
And we just say, you know what?
Maybe not, maybe not. That's not, you know, that has some merit to that. There's some merit to that. We want the fire protection, we want the fire protection.
I'm sorry.
Barricade off some, the public landing and the.
Yeah, we can do that, we can do that. Then people will climb onto Lyman Morse property and they'll climb onto other properties.
They go to the yacht club and the Lyman Morse property, just as Tom Pico put on the map, and those are the viewing areas.
Well, there's, there's Sherman, there's, there's other places they can watch it from, yeah.
Yeah, like, Sherman's Point Road and Marina Ave.
Anyway, Audra, we, we should, we, they're going to get the permit, and we should plan on that, and then take appropriate steps, including slamming the door if they don't.
Or slamming the door if the state CDC.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that's, there's a potential of that, by the way.
Even if it's a recommendation for gathering size or?
Yep, yep, absolutely. I, there's a strong, I think there's a strong potential that, I believe it's after Labor Day weekend, but I.
That was the talk in Augusta. Again, we're being recorded, so I will behave myself, but.
So anyway, we've beaten this sucker to death, which is good. I think the discussion is good because this has been a real problem, Matt. We, we were, you know, that incident that occurred when we had fireworks that we weren't knowledgeable of is, it scared us. We were, it was dangerous. It could have caused fires, it could have caused all kinds of things that we, that's why we wrote that policy, to try to do some control.
But I mean, and I just want to be very clear, though, they were, they did reach out ahead of time.
They did.
So.
They did, you saw the dates in their memo.
Yeah.
It was August, it was three weeks ago.
They did reach out ahead of time.
So this is not new. This is, you know, they've been trying to work with us.
I know, I went to a cabbage meeting and they talked about it there too, and I was like, oh, you know, it's a tough situation.
If it's anything, it's more of just like awkward timing.
It is, it's very awkward. Everything is awkward right now. I mean, it, you know, there's no, and I'm being very critical.
I, I meant kind of where it fell in regards to our meetings.
No, I meant in terms of lack of direction from Augusta about, you know, what we should do with gatherings, you know.
Oh, it's very awkward.
You know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, you're right, Audra, it's only been an indoor situation, it's nothing to do with crowds exterior. So that's where we're at, and that's what we need to follow.
So.
Onward to.
I have to ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you know what a first light inspection is?
What? Yes, they go out in the morning to see if there's any embers.
Yes, it means first thing in the morning. We did, we had that in our policy.
There will be little if any fallout that makes it to land. The fallout area is the ocean. There will not be a first light inspection necessary. I will speak to the fire chief to discuss the particulars. So they're saying, none of that first light stuff is applicable here because we're going to do it over in Sherman's Cove.
I would defer that to Chief Farley, and if he's, you know, he's, that's his bailiwick. But we did.
Or is it the Harbor Master? Because we, that's the thing for me that has been, people have complained about before is this, all of a sudden, relocate, the relocation of boats from moorings is a pain in the neck for people. And to, to know that we have a process for that and that it's not going to catch people off guard.
Yeah, you're right. They should be notified, of course, and they must be notified. But there's not very many moorings, because my boat used to be out there, and there's not very many moorings where the boats have to be moved. I don't think it was more than 10.
Well, I guess I just happen to know some of the people that know who to complain to when they didn't get notified or got notified all of a sudden. It's not been a perfect process always.
And I agree with you.
And this is going to come as a surprise to people. This is what happened before, is not a time when people know to expect fireworks.
I disagree.
September 4th? You think people know to expect fireworks on September 4th?
Oh, Labor Day weekend, yeah.[1594.12] Oh, Labor Day weekend, yeah. Yeah, they do.
And do we have, in terms of notice, if I have a mooring out there and I have my 36 foot.
Steve Pixley would have to notify you.
Okay. And is there a timetable on that that we should, I mean, again, in terms of 2019 revisions or any of this?
We're getting into, we's undefined.
Undefined.
To Allison's point, the process could be better defined.
Okay.
But it's why he has to notify, he has to notify the 10 boat owners that need to move their boats.
And they get angry sometimes when they're not expecting it.
Okay.
Or even when, even when they probably.
But yeah. It's, to say it's not perfect is to be putting a.
Are we going to notify the people taking care of Curtis Island?
Well, this is the.
I think we do need to send some kind of fire, because they don't do, they.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's hard.
During the night.
Fight fires when you're, that's not your job. Maybe we all go out there and.
Last time, Maine Pyrotechnics provided that person on Curtis Island.
No, we still have our fire department there.
Okay. Well, again, I leave those decisions to the most knowledgeable person, is Chief Farley.
Mm-hmm.
And it sounds like they've had conversations about this already. So we're going to move on to.
I want them to draw a hard line, like a.
All right. We're going to move on to select board reports.
I'll go third.
What?
Hold on one second.
Allison, you want to lead?
Phew.
Yeah, exactly.
I've got an update.
Thanks.
Town manager.
Right. So I am supposedly going to get an email from the Department of Financial and Administrative Services on Friday by 10 o'clock. And if I don't get it any sooner or any, if it's, if, yeah, if I don't have it by Friday at 10 o'clock saying, this is how you access your ARPA funds, I'm supposed to email somebody from both the state and MMA to complain about it. So anyway, that's my.
Oh, that's cool.
Major update is that.
That's the first chunk of money, about quarter million.
That'll, yeah, it'll be the half.
Great, all right.
Half of our disbursement.
Now, Matt.
I'll segue off of that. I'll start with the easy one. French Conference Room, ongoing.
Thank you.
Yes. By the next meeting, I will talk to Juniper. Hopefully, we will have a presentation of some sort, or at least some information.
It'll be a preliminary hybrid.
Preliminary hybrid, but also the costs and suggestions for.
Permanent hybrid.
For permanent hybrid. Again, I won't go into detail about that because we need to talk to Juniper, and we'll get that all moving ahead. Second, some meetings have.
Good question about that, or do you want me to wait until the end of your report?
No, fire right away. You seem like a nice human being.
Okay, thank you.
I'm ready.
Would it be possible to implement the preliminary workaround solution that, or want any number of them, to make, even if it's a little bit messy, to make remote participation possible in the interim, such as?
The short answer is yes.
Such as laptop on, you know, some of the things that have been tested out, that I guess we just want that.
So part of the process, to just cut you off just a little bit.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Is to have, and we'll do some tests ahead of time. So because the.
One, one of the emails to you was, I said, we need to have a dry, excuse me, Allison, we need to have a dry run before we have an actual stop.
Absolutely.
Just to make sure the bells and whistles are there. And I think that's the question you're asking.
I guess I'm just wanting to say that I think, I know, well, can, can we remove the barriers to trying something that sort of, we know sort of already works? Like, who is giving the authority, who is, can we empower Matt?
We have.
To.
We have.
Because it seems like.
Only, only request I had was, well, get some long-term financial data and lead times, which we need anyway. And the other thing was, I think we should have one dry run before the 7th, just to, just to make sure it's, you know, the, everything works. That's it. They're going to do it anyway. It's just a question of who attends it.
So and then to, again, to circle back, there are basically two streams of.
Right.
Technology that are being implemented. One is a short-term hybrid.
Right.
Band-aid, which we tested, I don't know, two weeks ago, just offhand.
Two weeks ago.
Casually, just to see if it would work at all.
And it did.
And it did. And so we'll come back and we'll do it more officially now. So that would be one that can be up and running. Because to hang the monitors and, that's, that's, you're talking months. So that's, that's a whole different issue.
I just think that we should just tell Matt, go ahead with it and not.